A 10-minute break instead of five. Um, let's all stand up and go ahead and uh, like in the regions.
I'm like with the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So all in attendance, we have Carol, Doug, myself, Ed, and Vaughn. I need a motion for the approval of the final agenda.
Okay, I would like to um, move Agenda Item 9B to the administrative agenda items, because this was supposed to be completed today and inspected. These were the, this is the release of the Prado money, and they have been out there for the past couple of days. And I was hoping you would give us a report at uh,
So 9B only?
Correct.
Become 11D?
Correct.
To where?
11D.
As in dog?
Okay, so anything else now?
No.
So like that was the motion for that amendment, and then we have a second?
All second.
On favor?
Aye.
Right, go ahead, public comment?
Alright, I have three. Uh, first up is Margaret Feinberg from Stony Brook regarding Agenda Item 13A. A reminder, you have three minutes. Hers is the only agenda, they will go first, so.
Sorry.
Uh, that's fine, um, I will start with that, because the first thing that I wanted to speak on is the Agenda Item uh, where is it now? Uh, 13A. Yes, and that is, I think that um, the monument there at Gateway Boulevard and uh, State Road 82, that issue could easily be resolved, and that would be with some drone, uh, excuse me, Stony Brook giving an easement to the CDD to control and maintain it, similarly what Darren Shute and Tony Pierce did, created for the flowway in March of 2012. It was quite easy, easily done. And that would, it's so that the, the services district could maintain the flowway over B14.
Yeah, Mr. Red Mar.
Hmm, that was part of it, yes. And.
Margaret, you have a question before we move here. So that's your HOA request, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And that, and.
I would just yell, how about that? Okay, and you prefer an easement?
I think so, that's what we agreed on this morning, and it was the entire board we agreed on, so request.
Not a, yes.
Yes.
So, so you're going to take a portion that the area, that the monument sits on, and essentially do a quick clean deed or an easement to us?
An easement.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, because I think you guys were talking about either you do a title transfer of the, the area, or you do an easement, and.
Because that plant is huge.
Yeah, sure.
Right, we think that.
We don't want all that.
We think the easement would be easier.
Just so I can see it.
So you're talking something similar to the landscape easements that we've been getting from other people, etc.
I think.
It would just allow us to continue doing what we're already doing.
Give you access to maintain it.
I, I think it would be comparable to the two sign and monument easements at the entrance of Pelican Reserve Boulevard, uh, in the intersection of Tree Line and Pelican Reserve Boulevard. The district monuments and signs, the walls there are easements, uh, from a long time ago, from the developer. If that's the board's direction.
But then that takes care of the landscaping as well as.
The monument.
Well, and there's fencing.
In this case, I thought it was just the monument.
No, there's, there's.
There's fencing.
There's, there's a lot, the vision, yeah.
Well, the fencing attaches to the monument, but I, Stony Brook would be.
If, if you look at this picture on the screen, what's the limits? If somebody can put a line on there of what we're talking about accepting? Because the monument, you can see it's down at the very bottom, just that little.
Yes, just the monument.
Wall goes back, so are we talking about just?
You put this on the.
Just the extent?
That's what's on the agenda, not this one?
There you go, are we talking in just between those two pillars, which is the monument?
From here to here?
No.
No.
That's three pillars, no.
No.
Here, here.
That piece there.
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the development order for that, it is like this, I mean, it's, it, it, basically, it's a large structure.
Okay, so how about this, how, let's, let's set up a meeting with staff, and then maybe one of the reps from Stony Brook, and then, and that's the wish.
There's no interest to take more than the monument.
Well, there's a, you got a monument, you got a wall. Are we taking the monument and the wall, or are we taking the monument only, which would be between the two pillars?
That's all I was thinking.
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
Big difference.
It'd be the whole thing.
There's a sign on the other side of it, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is?
Yes, right there.
So hopefully, we're looking for your direction, if you'd like for us to take the whole thing, or a portion of it, or just the.
Oh, I know where you're talking about, okay.
So, and then that way, we can have those conversations with Stony Brook HOA and see what they're willing.
There is a sign further left than what we're looking at?
No.
Yes, it's another face, if you're looking. Then it makes sense to take all the, okay.
I forgot about that.
It's not the same as the, the, the stone.
No.
It's just a lettering.
It's, uh, it used to say Stony Brook, and then it was changed to the Gateway logo in the Griffin. And it, what's on the, I'll call it the eastern side there, that you can't really see, right there? It's the same as what you're seeing on that uh, that northwest side.
It just says Gateway.
Back to the south, there's nothing?
No, that's my knowledge, there's not, there's just that little wall, and it goes to the pillars, so you can see how it sneaks.
Think I need to.
We're talking about maintaining the.
But you, you, okay.
Not just the sign that says Gateway.
They want it from here, from here, all the way to here, because the pillars go, you see it? It goes all the way, it goes all the way back here.
Can you widen that out? Expand that out so you can see what she's talking about?
Okay, there's another.
I see the pillar.
Agenda, agenda.
Okay, so it goes from there.
From there.
All the way down to there.
Yeah, like a horseshoe.
One of your saying different things.
But it's columns and fencing further to the south.
And the fencing would remain with Stony Brook, because we installed the fencing. We're just talking about the monument, because you've been maintaining it for years.
Margaret, the. Yep, are you talking about the fence that's on 82, right? We're talking about the fences in Griffin, because there's fencing there, too.
On Griffin?
Yeah. So right here.
Are you talking about Gateway?
Yeah.
That rises into the.
Gateway Boulevard.
Yeah.
Can we pin this down instead of?
Why doesn't everybody?
I mean, this is just.
I need to go take a look at it, it's what I need to do.
Go take a look, because then we can.
I wouldn't agree with what Tink said about.
I think public comments should be Margaret stating her public comment.
Yeah.
We say thank you, and then we take it back and have further discussion.
Happy to meet with you and.
Yeah.
Iron out additional details.
We will discuss this in 13A, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the way you would do it would be just to basically put a easement on five feet either side of the uh, monument is built? Is that how you, I don't know how you would legally describe that problem.
Well, I, I think, I think a good idea would, because a detailed conversation, I think for 13A, we can save it until then.
Alright.
It's helpful, because there are a number of factors, if you look on leepup pictometry, you can see how it used to be. Uh, and to look at the Pelican Reserve signs at Tree Line and Pelican Reserve Boulevard.
Okay.
You can see that dimensionally, uh, how they did that sort, uh, that easement area, so that.
So if you have a question, you'll bring Margaret back up on.
Okay.
We have questions, we'll bring you back up.
Thank you.
Yeah, non-agenda item?
Yeah, the non-agenda item is the O and M agreement. And we had been, you had requested that we come up with what our uh, requests were for the O and M agreement, that we wanted to amend it. And number one was address the internal inconsistencies in the O and M agreement as to the date by which a written intent of terminate is needed. A 11A requires written notice of intent to terminate at least 180 days from 10/1, which would be today for, for the same date as this meeting, or versus 11C, which requires written notice of intent to terminate by May 1st. As currently drafted, do the parties agree that the association has until 5/1 pursuant to 11C, should it wish to terminate? This would allow time to discuss possible amendments before May 1st. And then two was account for the potential future conveyance of the rights away from the CDD to Stony Brook, the transfer of assignment for existing contracts under the O and M, and from the CDD to Stony Brook, should the conveyance and of rights away take place, and the sunsetting of the OO4 funds should conveyance take place? Does the CDD also agree to mutually and timely termination of the O and M agreement if the roads are conveyed over? Uh, for example, give 30 days notice of conveyance, or something less, if that is what's come, contemplated in paragraph 11, and to sunset the OO4 funds? And the final request would be, and this is separate from the O and M agreement, is extend the statewide security contract one year while we are waiting for the AGO opinion. And can any RFPs that might go out be allowed to be reviewed by uh, the Stony Brook Committee and the HOA Board during the term of the O and M agreement, while we're waiting for the roads to be the AGO opinion? Those are the requests, and if you want a copy of this, I'll give it to you.
Uh, yes. You just. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next up is Rad Senior, it just says non-agenda, reminder, three minutes.
Didn't work last time.
It hasn't worked yet.
Give me a little bit of rope, because Ms. Feinberg was here for nine minutes.
But who's counting?
Yeah, because I ju, I get chopped at three, and it's not fair. Um, roundabouts, with $3 million in the hole, as a result of shifting the utilities, as a result of the Hold Harmless Agreement, we tried to get some litigation going, didn't happen. And as a result, our enterprise fund has been drained by 3 million. And um, I, I want to talk to you about the Hold Harmless Agreement just for a second, because I understand, I was in Europe at the time that Mr. DiAgostino was here, that you were going to look at the Hold Harmless Agreement and see if you could get it revised, because we don't want to be raped, or give the county a blank check for any future projects of theirs, including road widening at the top of Gateway Boulevard. Give me some um, feedback at some point, please, whether there's anything been done about that Hold Harmless Agreement. I thought it was an outrageously poor Hold Harmless Agreement, and it left us wide open to be um, $3 million in the hole that we are for those roundabouts. And I, I made a presentation to you guys on the 20th, on the 15th of February, that's the last time I was standing here, I've been out of town. Uh, a couple of things that I just want to summarize resulting from that, and I sent you all a copy of my presentation. Um, they, I asked you if you would ask Steven Bloom as a thought, to do a one-page summary of our 56-page complicated Rubik's Cube budget, so that it tells the residents what you're likely to be spending in the next five years, and what it's going to result in as far as their CDD component of their property taxes, shot up from 950 to 630 to 950 in the last four years, where is it going? I wouldn't be surprised if it's going to 1,500, I don't know. I've got an MBA, and it's not easy to unravel, your budget is complicated. So I, I would imagine the average resident doesn't know either. Um, I expressed my concerns a year ago about the bond project, 20-year bond, and you told me clearly, don't worry, it's just a capacity to borrow. Well, it's morphed very quickly into a temptation to spend. Um, there are two projects that are going on, that are troubling me. The first one is the Taj Mahal office that's being built at Gateway Commons Park. Um, goes back to when I was on the board, 2015, I was looking at this um, Girl Scout building, 4,000 square foot. I got them down to $350,000 at the time, we included all the land up to the fun park. There was mold, you could have fixed it, you could have built the whole thing out, you could have put it on the whole thing for a million bucks. And in the park survey in 2021, you mentioned that this 4,000-foot building you had in mind for the commons was 1.1 million. Then it grew to 3.5 million. I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's above 5 million, I don't know the facts, I'm waiting for you to tell us at some point. You're not advertising any of this on the website, I don't know what's going on with respect to spending and square footage. I don't know whether it's 4,000, 5, 6, 7,000 foot, I have no idea, but it seems to be out of control to me. Uh, the last thing is the park project, at least the proposed park project. We have mission creep going on, it seems. The residents told you flat out, 89% vote no park in 2021, and we're still talking about blowing the dust off the old park plan. I don't know why you created a park advisory committee. Uh, I, I know, I know Flavia, that you've, the board has agreed not to proceed one inch with a park unless you've surveyed the community with full comprehensive costs, capital operating and security costs, um, uh, with options, with all the questions listed, with costs, and an option to say none at the end of every question. I know the board has agreed to that, please make sure that your staff doesn't run away with this, it's up to the board to stop the spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Rad. Alright, uh, next up is John Sames, I didn't slaughter that. It says sewer in my driveway caused cracks and settling, also my valley gutters are retaining water.
So I'm here today, I've been um, going over this for the past couple of years. Uh, back in 21, I had the um, I had someone come out from Gateway that approved replacing the um, uh, the driveway, and they did take a look at it and said it was due to the uh, to the sewer. And uh, when I came back from being up north, uh, they told me that they were not going to do it anymore. So now I'm back at it again, I had Mr. Tinkle out last week taking a look at it, we took pictures, uh, sent it in, and he was in agreement that the uh, the driveway did settle because of the sewer, and then I just received an email from Chelsea saying that it wasn't caused by the sewer. So I'm at a position right now where I'm not sure where this is going, I'd like to have it replaced, uh, because it has settled, and it's causing cracks in my driveway, and I'd like to see if I could get that done.
Thank you.
What, what is your address?
12711 Meadow Pine Lane.
By Grace.
I was on site, too, last week.
And I'm the only uh, driveway in the community that has that sewer in my driveway. Normally, they're off to the side in the grass.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else online? No, but no one else signed up, no one else online, and anything that we had gotten has already been passed on.
Thank you.
Alright, local achievements and recognitions, do we have anything that you'd like to share? Chelsea, anything on the board? Advisory committees and items to report, Carol, you have any upgrade?
Um, I did uh, attend the um, Pratt meeting, Parks and Recreation meeting on Tuesday. Um, and we um, we at our last meeting discussed uh, the location of the dog park. And uh, they were told uh, by staff, actually, that we, we, the board had voted not to put it uh, over at the fun park, and that it would be going in the commons area. And uh, kind of told them generally where we, the board, had decided to put it, uh, you know, on the map and everything. And um, there, the big question that they came up with was fencing around uh, the commons area, when it starts to get developed now. Have we talked about fencing it all the way around, not by the water, obviously, which is on the one side, but all the way around? And so um, nothing was decided, nothing was brought forward, but uh, staff will be looking at costs and fencing and all that sort of stuff.
Security measures.
Security measures. And that's basically what happened. And those were the big, those were the highlights.
Security as compared to dog containment?
Both.
No, both, yeah.
Two separate.
Two separate. And I guess one of the things they were trying to decide was either perimeter fence around the entire property, or perimeter fence individual assets, like, you know, basketball and stuff like that. So we guess we'll just wait for the recommendation that they will have, and I think by the next meeting.
And I think staff will be looking into that, turn the report back to them. And, but that's the highlights from the meeting.
And they supported the um, outreach center at the.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Alright, so let's approve of minutes? I need a motion for the approval of minutes?
I make a motion.
I have a motion.
Second with discussion.
You have a motion, a second for discussion?
Yeah, uh, on the President Council meeting uh, coming up, uh, a couple of weeks, can we put out some type of a notice that it is immensely uh, important that all presidents show up? We've got people that, in this community, act like they live under a rock. We were talking earlier, talking earlier about this deal of uh, people and, what do you call it? Uh, advertising the puny, getting participation. I can write emails, still I'm blue in the face, but I can't make people read them. I know in my community, that is exactly a problem we got. I think what we got to do is we got to start getting participation of not 10 presidents, the same or the same repetitive ones every time. Let's get a email out to these people and let them know, this is important, it backs everybody in this community. There are some decisions coming up that I don't want to come next June, July, and August. I didn't know about that. Let's get a meeting, and let's lay it all on the table, let's lay this building on the table, let's lay this parks on the table, let's lay this deal that we did last week about the ponds, and all trees and bushes and shrubs within the LME come out. Let's lay all of this on these people, and let them go back to their 53 associations and tell them. I've already started it on mine, and I still have rope burns on my neck from making that discussion. We've got to get people involved, and there's only one way I know of doing it.
The April 25th.
Lay it out in front of them, that April 25th meeting, I think we need to have, I don't know if Georgia's doing it, or who's doing it, but let's get out a notice, we want every single president in Gateway Green, or in Gateway, at that meeting.
So we, we would want presidents or proxy?
Or proxy.
And then I think what we should do is we should.
And cams if possible, because if the cams don't send it out, the presidents aren't going to do it, that simple.
Yeah.
I'm not calling.
And then, what I think we should be doing, I, I don't know if we're doing this today, but if we follow it with like, just meeting highlights, like minutes, but then make sure we, we call out who was in attendance.
Well, good, good.
And we could go, like, here's, here's the list of all the communities in attendance, no representation.
That's how they do it at Pelican.
Yeah.
Every community is called out.
The last time we went five, and we're doing two from this. Now, for this one, there's 12. Yeah, the last one we had five, two of the same community, so we had three.
Well, a good, a great example, great example was this dog park fiasco. We talked about that for four months, four months, and I didn't hear a word from a single person. Where in the hell was Eagle Point, and where in the hell was Pine Crest? Why weren't they at that meeting? They would have known about it four months ago. Not saying it's right or wrong, the issue is, say anything, but don't come back and tell me you didn't know about it. That's not my fault. That's your fault for not showing up, and/or your presidents, and/or your cams not showing, we, we made this whole deal, we set this up for the whole basis of informing the people. If they don't want to be informed, then don't come back to me, because as far as I'm concerned, I've done my job. I can't go out and make you read stuff. If you don't want to read it, that's your problem, you suffer the consequences. But that is a perfect example that of something that should have never, ever happened, if they would show up. So my deal is, is whoever's sending this email out, make it immensely important that they show up at this meeting, because there's some stuff coming up here in this community in the next six months, that is going to rock the boat. Really rock the boat.
We have 12 signed up, and Georgia does notify them well in advance to put it on their calendars, but um, you made a good point, Doug, we'll try to get it to their proxies or cams or any, any.
It's going to the HOA presidents and their cams.
Yeah, so.
And if they're not, just come, come back to us and tell us they are going to come. I want to have, and I want to create a list of the ones, I like Doug's idea, let's create a list of the ones that don't come. If they, if they got a problem, they don't come.
I mean, Georgia can easily go back and say, we're reaching our eighth President Council meeting, your community has not been in attendance. You know, just put some pressure on, you know? And it's, it's for their benefit, I mean, it really is. We, the meetings are really good.
It really is.
People that attend, so they get a lot out of it, we put effort into having it. It's another avenue for people that, especially board, who either don't have the time, or whatever, to actually attend these meetings, or, or watch the recordings, to give them a special private audience.
Yeah.
But back to the minutes themselves, guys.
That's what I was going to say, uh, we'll look supervisor comment, so we have a motion, and then we have a second for discussion, and anything else? Go ahead and, okay, so I'm called for vote, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda item, so we.
Pull C.
On consent agenda items A and C.
Okay.
You want to pull A and C?
No, no, to move, to approve A and C.
I want to pull C.
Oh, you want to pull C, okay.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve consent item A?
I will move to approve consent to item, item Agenda A.
Aye.
9A.
We have a motion, we have a second?
All second.
Second on favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we move B to 11 admin, and what do you have? The sign for positives, go ahead.
Do you want to talk about 9C?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, the only thing I have on this one is, is that we've got one bid, did we go out for bids on this work?
We don't, Lykan's is the only local one, we can reach out to Foresight out of Tampa.
Okay, because I, the firm that does our work, that provides exactly duplicate of what we've done here, is up out of Atlanta, and their prices are good.
Send, send it to me, please.
Okay, I'll get that.
Have you had no issues with the, where they just send you the signs, they just ship them?
They bring them in and build them. They bring them, next week, I've got 12 mailboxes and two new signs coming in. Uh, their signs are essentially, you couldn't tell the difference between the ones that Lykan's has and ours.
And even with the travel, they're still.
Yeah. So, and they're lower than these prices here.
Okay.
Can I just?
But I, my whole point was, is that I just, my, my original question was, did we take bids? Because we're talking about $30,000 worth, sole serbs, sole source. We raised hell about when we do that on anybody else.
Not only are they sole source, but they were backed up and wouldn't even produce them.
What did they, did Daniel go out?
Bucks.
Lykan, Lykan stood the rest of the, the conversion.
Not the question, did he?
No, no, we did not solicit additional, because Foresight is the only one that I knew. Um, but Laura did mention to me after we posted the agenda, which I think may be something to consider, um, the warranty period of that roundabout, and if, in the event there are any damage to the signs that are out there now, the county would be on the hook. I, she, she mentioned to me that in the previous roundabout, prior to my time, that you guys waited a year before we did it, so that's something that you may wish to consider to delay.
Well, just, just so that the audience understands this, the signs that are in the roundabout that we just had, the big ribbon cutting out there last week, they do not match anything else in our community, it's the standard steel Lehigh acre sign that we have out there, they look, they look horrible for the ref, compared to the rest of the community. So this bid item for 30,000 plus dollars is to essentially take those signs out and replace them with our fluted post green decorative type sign, such that it's comparable throughout the community.
So you, the question, I guess, is do we want to wait a year or not?
Yeah.
I think.
I didn't see the need to do that.
I, I don't, I would agree with that, the reason why we did it a year was because we didn't have roundabouts. And then I remember Public Works at that time.
Yep.
Was very adamant about, everybody's going to run all the signs off.
Won't get hit or anything.
And then, over there?
Yeah. It's fixed already, yeah.
Okay.
Three days it was done.
I, the, the.
The new roundabout.
Yeah, the, the. The pedestrian cross.
Sure, it was a new time.
Well, I'm, I'm all for the signs and all for the change, because they look better.
To wait, I, I don't.
I don't think we should wait.
Because I, I really don't think.
So what we can do, we can push this to the next meeting, we'll, Ed, if you'll give me your contact.
I'll get you a.
And then we'll reach out to the Foresight company out of Tampa and see if they can give us.
Historically, from order to installation, takes how long?
For signs like this, our experience has been about 90 days.
Okay, so it's going to take about 3 months.
It's been, it's been more like about six months.
Okay, so let's just say, best case scenario is three months, worst case is six months, that's probably ample time, if, if we think a year replacement might be too long, it's going to be three to six months anyway. So I think we're still going to fall within our threshold of getting people comfortable, you know, so I think that works.
Yeah.
So are you wanting to table this item to the next meeting?
No, I know that, but that's why we had to, they've got Lykan's out of Monopoly on us, they didn't have a choice.
Yeah.
Do you want to, you want to table the item for the next meeting?
I'd like to table 9C to the next meeting, please.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, district engineer, you have anything?
No.
No. Chelsea, I do want to, I know we talked about you reached out to, just because I think residents still here, you reached out to Wyatt regarding the.
Yes, with regards to the, the driveway, the sewer manhole in the drive, or the.
I just wanted to give you guys an update, because I got one from her today.
Yeah, so I did ask Tetra Tech to go in and inspect the sewer, storm sewer manhole. And the report that I received was yes, there's, they're settling around the rest of the driveway and there's cracks around the actual manhole itself. But it appeared to be in good condition. I can read to you the.
I prefer that you read.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Oops. Hey, by the way, this is Stephen Gabby with Tetra Tech, I'm on the call.
Is this regarding the gentleman's statement?
Yes, so.
Just circle back and give him an answer.
The response that I received was it does have cracks around the manhole, but didn't see any significant settling around it. The upper part of the gentleman's driveway is lower than the apron, which is where the manhole is. His driveway also has cracks all the way up to the garage and his neighbor's driveways are cracked. I was also able to open the manhole and didn't see any visible damage to the box. I did go back and look at aerial photography and it seems this, that this driveway has been cracked for many, many years. And Stephen, I don't know if you want to add anything else to.
Well, I, I have some photos I could, I'd be happy to share, but I think I need permission from the organizer.
Stephen, I'm passing around to the board members a copy of a photo that I took of the driveway. My, my issue is, is not with the driveway. I don't have an issue with the driveway. I have an issue with the location of the slab that would be at the edge of what would be very close to the easement. The right away. And I went out and I looked at this myself. We've got another one over in Gateway Greens, which is almost as duplicate of this, only one's a sanitary and one's a storm. The issues are these manholes where they were put in, they were put in, they were compacted and they're in there and they're like the rocket Gibraltar. They're not moving. However, the material that was put underneath or backfilled in there was not compacted and it wasn't compacted properly. And consequently, that's why it's settling. I, I think it's totally an issue that's ours. Oh, this picture here is great. You can even see it better looking at it the other direction and see the crack. I wouldn't touch anything on the driveway beyond that crack that runs parallel to the driveway. But that piece that goes from the edge of the curb back, I believe that's ours.
But Ed, my, I was at the house too, so the driveway is much lower. So the drive, if anything, the driveway is set away more. So the theory of it wasn't compact correctly, that really.
Well, look, look around that manhole. Something, something is, something is wrong. Good example, go to Gateway Greens.
Pinewood is the same thing. My question is, I really would like to stick with engineer's opinion on this. Because this is in multiple areas. I know Pinewood, we have the same issue. I know Monolakes have one similar.
Gateway Greens has one.
And we have pavers, so.
Gateway Greens, Gateway Greens has got one and this is what the district did years ago. This is why I think we've got an issue. And Gateway Greens, go back to that picture, Stephen, or whoever's controlling this.
That's me.
Just imagine that manhole right there at Gateway Greens. What they did is they put a square around that manhole and then isolated it with like. With the film. Because that's exactly what was happening. That's exactly.
So.
It's typically, it's, it's a shame that this has to be, but when you have a curve in a road and you have a manhole that follows a line and a grade and it changes direction, you don't have any choice. You have to put in a manhole. You have to put in a manhole every time you have a change in direction. And this happens to be a change in direction. The one in Gateway Greens is a change in the direction. This isn't a bad luck deal to this property owner. It was the fact that this is the way it had to been, be done. The only way you could do it was have been taken, put in another manhole in the street and then put in multiple manholes to make the curve. That's the only other way of doing it, which is not good engineering. But there needs to be some responsibility on this and I think this is something.
What is your proposal? Looking at.
My, my, my proposal would be to go in there and that concrete slab that you see there between the curb and that line paralleling to the back of the car. We take that out and we repour it. Report.
So from the, I'm sorry, did you say from the valley gutter to here?
Yes.
Well, that portion doesn't seem like it's moved at all. It's the portion behind it that is lower than this portion.
That is, that's what I was trying to say, Ed, is the driveway that is much lower.
Okay, what's causing the cracks, Stephen?
The cracks, I think are ubiquitous of this.
It's not the driveway.
So, all right, the, the cracks that run longways are pretty typical for the other driveways in the neighborhood. This is a solid joint and why these panels are at different elevations now. It, I'm not, it's not clear. There could be some inflow infiltration into this into this junction box, which could let some soil migrate and is causing a little bit of undermining underneath this panel. But it's pretty consistent, so that, that, that's a possibility. But the fact that this panel looks like it's not, hasn't moved since it was put in. I mean, that, that tells me that there's probably another issue going on with the settling of this panel.
Stephen, this is like a bridge. When you go up to a bridge, you always have a hump at the bridge. The bridge doesn't then go to settle. Anything going to happen, it's the roads coming up to it. And what's happening here is the cracking is on the other side of the manhole. That manhole isn't going anywhere.
Add two comments. I believe that the property changed hands in twenty twenty-one. Did you purchase the property? So I believe these cracks were prior to the, him purchasing the property.
I don't think that has anything to do with it.
Just, it's a fact. And my concern from, sorry, Stephen, go back. If, if we repour that, his driveway is still going to be lower and there could potentially cause, you know, just like you said, Ed, if you go down on a bump, you're putting the pressures here. You go down, it could, we're going to be in the same boat in a year's time.
Did you, because I had knowledge of the other driveway, so I did go and look and, and there's multiples are like that. So I, I don't think you have visibility of that because I think you only visit this.
Well, I've done the one, the two I know about, the one that's in my neighborhood where the owners.
This community, this particular.
I drove this whole community and I didn't see any more manholes that were in.
Oh, no, not manholes, the cracks, that's what Stephen tried to say. It's the same exact thing and that's what I went back and I was like, okay, that is exactly the same thing and they don't have a manhole. So it's, it's happening.
The staff recommendation is it's, and, and speaking with Tetra Tech, it's not a structural issue, it's an aesthetic issue. And the recommendation is not, not to do the replacement.
Okay.
But if, if the board wishes for us to replace a portion or all of the driveway, we'll, we'll.
I'm not saying anything about all the driveway. My deal is.
I mean, if you were going to replace anything, I would replace the first apron panel and then this second panel. I mean, this one is also severely cracked, but that's, you know, pretty far away from the issue.
I'd go in since the, since the fact is of the settlement, I would go in right now. I would take one ring riser out of the manhole, lower it and re, repave it such that you match the crack on the backside of the driveway. Then if the owner wants to do the driveway to his garage, that's his alternative.
But we would contour the replaced pad to match the existing.
In my opinion, in my, in my opinion, what you've got to do to do this, if you go back to the driveway, you see that crack, you're off about an inch, inch and a half. The only way you're going to solve that unless you want to have that manhole sticking up like Eiffel Tower is to take one ring out of that manhole and adjust it.
I didn't know it was possible, but okay.
Yeah.
Well, he, one question that I have and is the, let's just take out of account, what's the cause? Let's just put that aside. But because it is cracking, does it, what, what issues does it cause or what risk does it have to the, to the structure today with it being cracked?
None, because that's what he's saying, aesthetically, it's totally aesthetic right now.
I agree with that.
You agree with that as well, yeah. So that, so that's my thing, it's, it's an aesthetic. I mean, this is no different than Margaret's driveway.
I don't know what their neighborhood association says on that, that over at Callaway Greens, if you have a crack in driveway like that, you have to replace it in our community. That would necessitate replacing the driveway, right?
The property owner requested this to be addressed, so ultimately, staff weighed in on it, we're looking for your direction.
Do, do we know, there has, there wasn't previous an oak or anything? Doug, there, there's no oak over here previously?
That's what I looked for.
Yeah, because you're normally, where you would have an oak would be right there. Where are you, Poncharis?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so in, in Poncharis, because I lived there for seven years. You, in that space is where, you know, they would typically.
If, if somebody would have been able to go back and had one of those like you did that last meeting.
I want to do it right now.
Back, I'm not. Typically, when you have something, you have an oak in there, you have a depression and I didn't see that.
What is that?
You know, there was, your knowledge was never.
One, two, seven, eleven?
So it's Pecromich, you can go back.
One, two, seven, one, one. Meadow Pine Lane.
Two houses up from Ed Cecil's.
Like I know.
Better yet, two houses up from what Ed Cecil used to live.
Oh, good. Hold on, mess me up now. Okay, FPL.
I just hate to see people getting caught in the middle because of the utility that we've got that causes, this isn't bad luck, it's just the way it is. It's bad enough to have a fricking manhole in your driveway, let alone to have a manhole in your driveway with.
Chelsea, what if we hit out to me? Um, because I can't, it was this one. Here's Meadow. Oh, it's right here, it's right here, it's right here, it's this one, this one.
Looks like a bullet.
Yeah, you can see it right there.
So what I think I heard you propose, Ed, is that we lower the manhole rate. Replace the first slab and the second.
No, just first slab.
Well, I thought I heard.
Just this slab right here and, and grade it such that it matches the, it matches the, the current driveway and then bring it to the curb.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
And if we, if that would be approved by the board, would we give the homeowner at that time the opportunity to do whatever else he wants to do further up? If he chooses to do that on his job, okay. All right.
Would there be anything done on the valley gutters?
I'm sorry.
On the valley gutters, would there be anything done on that or you're not?
No, what I would do on that would be to go from the, start at the end of your driveway, that last joint. First joint going into your driveway, set that as the grade and then level it straight back to the top of the valley gutter. The valley gutters, those belong to your association.
Yeah, and they look okay, but I can see on the pictures.
That you probably got a slope issue that, but that, that one truly is your HOA. That's what he stopped. Yeah, that, that's an HOA issue.
Yeah, you can see that there, right?
Yeah, you see it on this picture? This is from start of the.
How long have you, what year did you move in?
Twenty-one.
Sorry?
Twenty-one, one.
Twenty-one, okay, yeah.
So I, I don't.
We've got that all over Gateway. Just go in, the only thing you can do is go in and you relay the, the valley gutters, but that's a whole separate issue.
So Stephen, ultimately, the recommendation was to not touch it because structurally it's, it's sound, the manhole is sound. But cosmetically, if the district would be entertaining the idea of replacing anything, any concrete, it would just be the apron. Is that correct?
If we can say it's. That's its proposal, yeah.
That was, that's proposal. I mean, that's not a horrible idea. I mean, I think you're going to have to do more modifications to the manhole if you do it that way. If you replace the second panel, you won't have to modify the elevation of that box.
My concern is the second panel is outside any district utility easement or interest.
That's my point.
And I think that's why.
Would that, would that be doing partnership?
I'm, I don't want to touch private property. We can't touch private property without a temporary construction.
So is anybody willing to do a motion for this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we go in and as I indicated, we match the grade of the slab that's going into the driveway, readjust the manhole frame such that we have a slope, that's a positive slope from the level of the regular driveway down to the valley gutter.
And I'll second.
And for just.
For aesthetic reasons, right?
No, just the apron.
But this is for aesthetics reason, I just want to make sure we're.
I'll say aesthetic, yes, it's structural also. Cracks in the concrete like that are not just aesthetic, something's wrong.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, let's call the vote on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Me too.
So we will be doing the apron.
Yep.
What was the move?
Agreed. All right. We have your contact information, we'll be in touch for scheduling.
Are you planning to pave the rest?
The whole driveway, if you want to come up to here.
No, I just, the, the first panel is what we just approved that we're going to do. Okay.
We will work, we'll contact you and try to coordinate that.
All right. Admin, so nothing else for district engineer?
We got other, we got other issues with the engineer right now.
I've got a quick minor update on the, on the plants within the LME. We were asked by staff to give account on the trees, the shrubs, fences, everything on Lake seventy-eight and eighty-two, just to come up with what we're talking about here in the LME. So we, we took account based on the surveyed stakes for the lake maintenance easement on both of the lakes and Daniels Preserve. On Lake seventy-eight, that's the long one in the center. There's approximately five hundred and one obstructions within the lake maintenance easement. So that's trees, shrubs, bushes, pavers, fences. And then on Lake eighty-two, there was a hundred and sixty-seven. So I think Brad with Extreme Divers, he got a preliminary quote, he's still trying to get more quotes, but I think he was around a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars to remove the plants on his lake. So that's kind of what we're talking about. So I think there was a question though from staff and from us as well. I think the direction was going forward, so I think we're still confused on if you guys want us to apply the removal of all these trees on these lakes or take that up and address it on future lakes.
That have not started construction.
I specifically asked that question and this was not retroactive as I understand the motion that we did. It was not retroactive. So upon seventy-eight and eighty-two, we're not impacted by this. To spend a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go back and piss off two hundred and twenty residents is absolutely insane, absolutely insane. Going forward, that's a whole different story. I still think it's insane, but it's a different story. The issue is though, is to spend that kind of money to go back when they've got half the work done, to me makes absolutely no sense in the world.
So.
Go ahead and.
I just, I want to, I, we will need clear, clear, clear direction because we have a contractor that the contract has been awarded, but they have not started construction. The removal of those said plantings were not included on that contract, so that would be an immediate change order to it and they haven't started construction.
Which leads to that.
The, Stephen, which are the two that MRI?
All right. Excuse me. MRI has four lakes. One is in Stony Brook, that's fifty-seven at the north end. They've got one twenty-eight, one twenty-five and Gateway Greens and then Lake one oh five and Gateway.
And then you have.
So these are the ponds that have not been started.
Correct, but we have awarded, we have awarded the contract.
Okay.
Which does not include this item, that's what she's trying to say.
Okay. Okay, so is the deal that we're going to take and go back and indicate that these are the first four, which means we send staff out and notify all the owners that all the trees, all the shrubs, all the fencing, have the, the burn bags, everything in the LME comes out.
That's what I need direction.
That is not, that is not required by development order. Okay, that is not.
That is not required by the development order.
Okay, so let's go back to Daniels first. So when you went back there and you took a look at the trees, you're, we are talking about two different things. So there's the construction and are they affecting construction? And then there's the maintenance. Did you go back and look for maintenance reasons?
Yeah, we've looked at both of those and that's where we were coming up with at the last meeting, suggesting that five to seven set foots, five to seven foot setback off the berry line.
But which, which we did.
Which we didn't, which we didn't, didn't decide to do. We went straight to the LME. My problem is, is that, and again, using seventy-eight and eighty-two and more importantly, eighty-two as a, an example, a perfect example. The guy that's got the three or four ficus right next door to him, he's got four or five royals. They are within the LME. They aren't even touching nor do they interfere with the maintenance, but they're within the LME. I, I, I couldn't with a straight face go to that guy and tell him, we're going to have you tear out four or five perfectly good forty-foot royal palms because they are a foot inside the LME. I mean.
Well, I.
I'm on the wrong board if that's the positions we're taking. That hardcore position, that's a crap we're getting out of Washington right now, this hardcore crap. Somebody's going to have some common sense on this stuff. Somebody's gonna have some common sense on this stuff.
But we made, we we as a board made a decision.
I understand.
So we're gonna stick to that. My thing is, given the, I was on site too and and the, yes, there's, there's. Space for maintenance right now because the water level is so low, but when it's not.
No, you can't do that. You 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 you're totally right. When they drain these water levels.
So that's my, so that's what I was asking you. I went back there and then I was able to somewhat, because I also live there, so. Guide over the water level will be at because it's extremely low and there is a lot of those trees on seventy eight that. Maintenance is not gonna happen. Not with the gator. It's not gonna happen.
And and those are the ones, that's, that is the exact problem we've got. We got the 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 cart about two days in ahead of the horse. All of the knowledge we need relative to where and what needs to come out is based upon one single measurement. And that is where the trench goes, because we know the trench is about a foot to foot and a half above the control elevation. If you don't have five to seven feet, which we talked about there out in the field, from the trench. You are not going to be able to maintain it in the future. So consequently, everything that's within five to seven feet of the trench. You won't get any argument about it out of me on that.
That comes out.
That that comes out. But if I got a royal that's at nine feet, but it's within the LME, there's where I have a problem. That one shoe fits all. It's not good engineering. It's not good engineering and in my opinion, it's not good public relations at all. But it is what it is. We've approved it. But we've gotta get back that when these guys are putting in that trench. That establishes it. That's where we're really gotta work. We gotta be able to get a vehicle between that trench and five to seven feet away. If that doesn't happen, we got a problem. We can't maintain it. And I agree, I agree with that.
So I I'm not clear, because I'll be honest, I thought the motion at the last meeting was including Daniels, like. Because we're still there, we had to go back. That was the biggest thing, like we were still there. And I think that's what Daniel asked of us, like, let's start now. Let's go back and take care of it. Am I right, Daniel?
Somebody re- re- review the tape. I do not recall.
Cause I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm on the table.
I asked the question, was this retroactive?
I I I I think I remember it was.
It was moving forward, but what, what is moving forward?
So that's the question. Yeah, did it include or did it not include?
Sounds like we are in need of another motion.
But I would say.
Go ahead, Dan.
Lake seventy eight, that sale, that sale, you're way past, you'll go back in the rework of what, removing those plants, the cost A of removing those plants, but B, the rework that'll have to happen. In order to get that lake bank that has already been so, so far into that project. Now eighty two, you can course correct on. It isn't that far gone yet that you couldn't course correct in mid of that, but you're still gonna eat the cost of the removal that wasn't scoped in the original contract.
So that's.
Well, no, part, part of eighty two, the plans did identify.
It did have some, some.
So, so your, your recommendation that we leave seventy eight as is.
Correct.
And then. Moving forward, include eighty two and removing every day.
So I'd have to see what those numbers look like. I do agree with that because that does, because it's an enforceable standard. That is what, that was what I I had recommended before was clear cutting the LME.
I'm asking you to look at what is the direction that you want to get it done.
Well, it would seem to me if you've got a contract that's been bid and everything, that is behind us. That's, that's not going forward. If we have, if we don't have a contract, if it's just out for bid or whatever. Then that to me is going forward.
But but that's why we have to.
But if we've got a contract and we've approved that contract, that's behind us.
But does that contract include?
Change orders and and it only did some. So I I'm in agreement with that. The one that's already done, just let it be. It's done. Let's not go over. But the other one.
So we have a ten percent contingency on these ponds.
Okay, we'll see. So let me, let me say one, let me say one.
Looking, we're looking at this as it's either, it's it's A or it's B. We're not looking at.
Well, and let me, let me make a statement. I think I'm gonna meet in the middle. So anything that's already complete, that ship is sailed. Anything that is in process but not scoped for removal uh. Uh, as it pertains to what, to what we did last time, anything was was within that scope, because that's not, that's not accounted for. So anything future that our bid documents will include clearing of that area and it'll be incorporated in price. Anything that's currently in process. We have to uh make a decision on what is critical. To me, I think the bridge between doing nothing and doing what we need to do. Is we need to look at anything that is within the easement within seven feet of control elevation to its point. Uh, because that's critical of the trench, of the trench for maintenance.
Probably more like nine feet from.
That's what.
Whatever the number is, nine feet from the trench, I'm okay with.
That's what we need to um address currently, so we can have maintenance.
Well, if we.
So it'd be a little bit of an exception.
If we looked at eighty two from the prison that you just described, we say eighty two and we're gonna go nine feet from the trench, not the full LME.
Yeah.
What, how does that one sixty seven change?
Does it go half? And then, and what's the price to address that?
Yeah, I don't know.
So we're, we're doing what we need to do, which is create maintenance, but we're also. Puts, putting a a stake in the ground, saying anything moving forward, we will address it. It'll be in bid documents and we'll give people prior notice so we can.
And nothing survives beyond, I mean, in inside of the nine foot from trench. That we already agreed, that needs to go down, not to.
Are we in you and that, that's.
Twenty, twenty from going forwards, for this.
Going forward from.
Twenty forward, the only one that we're talking about is just a specific pond eighty two.
It's not, it's not the nine foot from the trench going forward?
No.
No.
It's a LME, the whole LME, that can be ten or eleven feet.
Yes.
Okay, so the only one we're considered exception is eighty two.
And and I think question for.
No.
No, okay, let's, let's.
Well, let's find out. First of all, let's make sure we're talking about apples and apples. Did the study that the pricing they give you go to the full limit of the LME? And everything comes out, that's that price, or it'd go five to seven feet?
Stephen, can you speak to that?
That, so that was a verbal number I got from Brad to remove all the trees in the LME.
So you want the full width.
So that one, so we have the existing one that Brad is doing in Daniels. That's, we can, we can go to your point, do the maintenance. Path. We have the MRI contract for the four ponds. That's already been, that, that.
It's gonna be LME.
LME.
Is it, yeah, which, yes. So everything is gonna be LME for everything else, except this one that.
I think we're talking eighty two.
Yeah, eighty two. It's the only one, yeah.
And then you have the two ponds that are left for Met Tower.
Adjust those.
Correct.
Those need to be clear cutting the LME as well.
Yes.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
We're clear.
So eighty two is the only one that we're gonna work with this and then I'm fine with nine feet above trench.
Yep, maintenance, maintenance vehicle with.
Okay, and I just wanna, another thing, I know like about three weeks ago, the resident that reached out to me from Daniels. Again, I would prefer the communication between the residents. And vendors does not take place. It needs to come to staff. They, the vendors are to communicate with staff. Vendors can guide residents to communicate with staff. But they are not authorized representatives of the district. And sometimes the conversation between, they 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 just confuse the resident and and we're looking like the bad guys. So. Very promptly.
Yep.
Well, thanks for getting left field real quick.
Exactly, and it did, and it did for me because it was like the vendor said so and then it's.
But again, but again, again, this should have never happened.
Okay.
We should be out, we should be out right now on these next four ponds, going to every house that's got anything within that LME and telling them, this is a staff issue as far as I'm concerned. Staff goes out and tell every one of those. That has to come out.
Well, we needed this direction today, so.
But this, this eighty two is a little bit of a.
Different, okay. All right, thank you, Dan.
Are you good? Are you clear? Okay, all right, we will proceed accordingly. Thank you for clarifying.
Hey, hey, real quick, how many feet from whatever point we're talking about for like eighty, nine feet from control?
No, for trench.
Nine feet from trench.
Nine feet from trench. That's, that is very conservative.
Okay.
Very conservative.
All right, Stephen, are you good?
We still got other issues?
I'm good with that. Um, quick update on, if you don't mind, on the uh Lake one oh nine uh. When we presented the sixty percent, Ed mentioned that the golf course is doing their rehab on the golf course. And that would be a heck of a time to get in there and work on the golf course side of Lake one oh nine. Uh, yesterday, Brad and myself met with the super David Pagel. And we walked the lake. Um, their plan is to have that hole, hole number nine on Lake one oh nine. Uh, regrassed at the end of May. So if we want to get in there and work on that, time is of the essence. Um. So we reached out to, I reached out to all the vendors that we have contracts with right now to get, you know, estimates to do the work. Uh, so far Brad's the only one that's taken the initiative to uh reach out. He has rapport with the golf course superintendent, with the GC doing the golf course work. And the uh person that's installing the sod on the golf course. Or so he seems like the appropriate person to to work on this. Um, he, he has a a proposal to do the work that is a little different than what we normally do. Normally, we would work on the lakes in the dry season. Um, that's obviously not an option since we have to be done within the next two months. Um, his proposal is to put the non-oven geotextile down um over the existing uh soil to trap the soil there from escaping. And then filling in the escarpment, the eroded area with number four stone to get to a six to one grade. Which I think is a, it's a great idea. We won't have to worry about de-watering the entire basin five. He can install the rock um at the current water elevations. We don't have to worry about soil floating away. Um, and he thinks he'll be able to finish um within the timeline set by the golf course. He gave a a verbal number of two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, which works out to about a hundred and sixty five dollars per linear foot. Uh, he hasn't provided a formal submitter yet for that or formal proposal, but he's working on it. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. You guys told us to go and, you know, get some costs, so we're still waiting for the other vendors to provide costs, but wanted to present that information to you.
Let, let, let's follow up on that. I had a long discussion with Brad about that today and I think he's got an idea that even Bob might find innovative. What he's doing.
They're gonna fill it with dirt.
What he's doing, what he's doing here, no, we haven't thought about this before, but it, it's interesting. Imagine the golf course, the ground, ground comes over the golf course, it drops off twelve to eighteen inches, then it goes out to the lake. He's gonna go back about two feet onto the golf course side of the, the escarpment, okay? Dig a trench, the full length. He's gonna fold the uh fabric into that, roll it like we normally do, over level. Drop it straight down the escarpment and then straight out into the lake.
And fill up the difference with the stone?
And fill up the difference with the stone to create the deal.
I like that.
I like that idea. The only thing that I'm I'm a little concerned about on that is unless he gets that in there, keep in mind, he's gonna do that with high water level. So that means he's gonna have to have his grader and or his compactor basically going in the lake with water on top of the stone. You know, he knows he's just a hidden rookie. He knows what he's doing. The issue is, is that that stone has got to be compacted up against. But so what's gonna happen? You get separation and that thing is going to catastrophically, catastrophically fail. Right back down and we're right back to where we're at. So if he can get that stone in there and get it compacted tight, it's a great idea.
Well, you can run your golf cart up and down.
I'm not riding my golf cart up and down, no. But the thing is now is when the water level drops going on from now on. That water level drops down two feet, you'll see the stone out there. You'll see the stone.
It'll be stable.
It it should be stable. I think, I think it's a great idea. The only thing that I think that Brad had an issue with it was uh 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 conditioning that price. Was that he's gotta have a place to store materials while he does the work. So there's gonna be ground torn up. I said, he might talk to the people that own the, where we're at at Fairway Office Park, go right back behind there and dump the stone right behind the ninth tee. Then he can pick it up and haul it up and down there till his heart's content. He wanted to take and dump it on Gateway Greens Drive. I said, that ain't gonna happen. That that ain't gonna happen. Yeah. Uh, so, but but that's an add-on price that he has to have, but I'm gonna guess that he's gonna be around two twenty five. And if we can get that thirteen hundred feet for two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
That's a lot cheaper.
That's a hell of a lot cheaper. Yep.
So is he gonna lose two feet?
Do what?
Is he gonna lose two feet of the golf course?
No, what he's gonna do, he's gonna go back.
Original two feet that you were talking.
He's gonna go back in and cut the trench two feet and then that will be grass layer. That'll be grass. Then the stone will start at about a foot below, above control, go down into the the water and straight out to create the six to one slope. Okay, innovative way of doing it.
Well, you have more information than I do because I just got Stephen's email this afternoon and I haven't even had a chance to converse with staff, Stephen or the contractors.
On this, you're gonna lose, lose.
Well, I think the key is, is what is gonna be our position of, do we bid this or are we going to give this, award this to one contractor? Stephen, are you gonna put together a quick spec, a plans and specs? Because this isn't gonna be SRF.
It won't be SRF.
So funded. So are you gonna put together a real quick spec to be able to allow uh Chelsea to get bids out and get prices back so that we can get this thing going in the next two weeks?
So Chelsea already asked me to send out, you know, plans to get quotes essentially from contractors. So I don't know what the district's limit is for requesting quotes directly from. Contractors and sole sourcing, so you know, of course.
It's hundred ninety thousand.
But if it's maintenance, it's one ninety five, if it's construction, it's over, over four.
Yeah.
Say it again.
If it's considered construction, you know, there's new substantial changes and sculpture.
I would strongly recommend we get multiple quotes and and or, and or see if our current vendors can use the pricing that they've solicited as part of the bids. Um, that they've provided to us already.
I think we get a quick spec put together.
If we can do that, as long as we can get it done in this.
By May.
By May.
By the end of May.
What stone is it? Stone.
So if you would like to give us direction on soliciting that and working towards that and try to bring it back to you by the uh April eighteenth meetings, we'll do our best.
Trying.
Okay.
I'll agree to whatever Ed and Bob agree to.
April eighteenth still gets the time to get it done.
It'll, it'll most likely be, we'll have the agenda item, but I doubt Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if you believe that we'll have the pricing back in time for the agenda to be hosted a week in advance, which is only like a week from now. So we'll.
We'll see who really wants to do the job.
I mean, I think Met Tower doesn't have time to do the two lakes they have left this, you know, right now, so there's no way they're gonna be able to take on that work.
I think we need to at least make the attempt to solicit.
Absolutely, absolutely. Give it a shot.
Yeah, I have, I have sent the emails out. I got verbal that B and Z is not interested. Um, so MRI said they were interested and they're working on it. Um, so we have Brad's and we have MRI possibly.
Yeah, uh, and Stephen, would it qualify with this technique that they're talking about? Would qualifies an upgrade to the existing lakes?
I would say so.
Okay, so then it, then it is construction. And then you're at the higher limit. It also referred to as a pilot since it's something.
Well, it's, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of the competitive solicitation requirements, so.
What, whatever we have been doing, this is just an alternative method.
Okay.
That's all there is.
Alternative upgrade. That's just one of mine. Just one on.
Yeah, we, we, we still on with Stephen?
Yeah.
I'm here.
We're out for bid right now. Is that true? On the ad, I'm sorry, on the admin building?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, uh, do we have an alternative bid going, going out?
Yes.
Why didn't I know about it?
That all for the.
Yeah, what are we bidding on an alternative bid for this project?
We're asking for the pricing for the site work for the phase one park improvements.
Why are we doing that? I voted for that phase one park project for a thirty percent review and we go to the owners of this community. We're not doing any bidding. We're not doing any design beyond thirty percent and we're sure as hell not doing any construction. Why did you take and overrule the board and do that?
I don't recall the board making that vote.
Yeah, thank you. We have not voted on anything for that park to be built. That park is still a dream. It's not, and we're spending money on that park. I I am totally opposed to it and this is, this is ridiculous, Chelsea. You don't have that authority to do that. I don't know why we're taking, and I'm hearing about this through the grapevine. This is, this is bull. We give you the guidance on what to do. You don't pick and choose. That park is not a done deal. It's not even close to a done deal. I want to see the thirty percent report, which is what we voted on. I wanna see the construction costs. I wanna see the operation of ma- maintenance costs and I wanna survey out to our residents. I got fourteen hundred people in my community that are royally pissed off about this. We're taking off and we're making judgments on this stuff and spending money that we don't have. First of all, what do we have to do with a park? Being bid with a building project. I want, if I'm gonna do a park, I want park contractors to bid on the park.
So you're talking about site work?
It's just. No, 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 we're building. I'm told.
Talking about site work.
I'm talking about.
About incorporating potential site work.
Let's make sure. That's what I wanna find out. Are we purely site work? There's no park, no playgrounds, no pickleball courts, nothing else being built?
Well, correct, the site work is the bid alternative. You all asked for pricing. We're working on pricing with the company to provide the sport courts. You just approved the pricing, the proposal and the purchase of the playground equipment today. So what is on as the bid alternative, which is an alternative to the admin building, is the site work component of the phase one park improvement.
Okay, here's what I have heard. This is what I've heard. We now have the, huh?
From homes.
I'm not going to say who that is right now. I may talk about it in a minute.
We'll put it on the clock.
Let's put it this way, a vendor, a vendor. I understand that what we've had is, is that the park and the layout of the park has conflicted with the design of the administrative building. Does everybody else know that?
No.
No.
Neither did I. And that's why I'm saying, the board is not being informed about this. Here's what I heard was happening and it sounds like to me it is apparently true. The plan for the park project that we haven't approved yet, the plan for the park project interferes with the layout of the road coming into the new building. So the new building, road and drainage related to that needs to be changed to accommodate what would happen if we built a park. That I have in and of itself probably no problem with for one reason. It's accommodating something that we don't have to do and correct later. In other words, don't make a mistake when you know it's a mistake.
And we kinda talked about it, like ready beginning stages.
But that I don't have any issue with. Where I have an issue with is if we're doing anything within the confines of what would be a considered park expense. When we haven't approved the park, we haven't got the money for that. What are we doing? And the bigger issue is, is that where are the plans for the work? We don't have plans. We haven't authorized plans. We're taking bids and I'll, correct me if I'm wrong, we're taking alternative bids on the preliminary plans. That's not good engineering. Where, where's this coming from? I don't know. I didn't do it. Did somebody else on the board make that recommendation?
So my, I would just start with this. You, you mentioned it was a vendor. What?
It's the engineer.
Okay, well, I, I think this is gonna be the first and hopefully the last time I mention. I am the chair of this board. So if the engineer firm needs to reach out to someone, my expectation is that you reach out to me. I don't have a problem. We reach out to the five of us, but I wasn't aware of it until now.
Well, my thing is, is that it's not too late. What's too late is the presumption that we've approved this park plan. And I got news for you. That park plan is so freaking far from being approved is, it ain't gonna happen, people.
So that's, so that's what I'm trying to understand. So Chelsea, what was the conversation that you or staff had with engineering firm that caused the delay?
The delay in.
Giving us the information that we need.
The task author, the entire task authorization for the, um, park plan was approved by this board. And so we've mentioned.
Say it again.
The entire task authorization for Tetra Tech for three hundred plus thousand was approved by this board.
To do what?
For full design. Up to, up to full design.
For what? The park?
For, 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 for the, yeah.
No way in hell. We approved thirty percent and that was it. There was no authorization to go beyond the thirty percent point till we have a survey.
I'd be more than happy to send you the task authorization that was approved. So, but what we've done.
I was conned. I got news for you. I'm gonna be royally ticked.
Okay.
If I was conned, was anybody else of the opinion we authorized full design of this project?
What, what, Mike, I need to understand what full design means.
I would be more than happy to send you the task authorization, the master concept plan, which was included as part of the task authorization and the phase one of the.
Phase one, okay, but that's.
Full design.
Okay, phase one, it's one thing, but when we're saying full design to me in my mind is the whole entire project, which I will tell you, I do not think that's the point.
Phase one, we approved Tetra Tech or Tetra Tech, we hired them, which was a mistake we will never ever do again. We, if we were to hire a contractor, we hire a contract. We don't hire a contractor and then have him sub it out and then have him held harmless for the fact that the other one's not getting his deadlines meet. That's that, we won't do that again. The issue is, is that I sat here and I remember, we would, we're not going to be go beyond the thirty percent approval. Because when the first survey went out, it had no cost information. And we said, oh, we'll have that when we get the thirty percent report and we can go back out with a survey to the residents. Where is the thirty percent report and where is the construction cost and the capital cost? And where is the survey we're sending out to the residents to let them know that we're spending money like drug sailors?
Okay, so this is.
This is ridiculous.
So, so Ed, that it comes from staff or that's coming from Tetra Tech? Because do I, who do I have to hold accountable?
It's not the wealth.
Tetra Tech for not bringing the.
It's, it's not, it's, it's not Tetra Tech. It's Holmontis.
Well, their contract is not with Holmontis. Their contract was Tetra Tech. So legally we hold them accountable.
Hold on, hold on. We might have a different, different opinion here. We gave that contract, let's fast forward backwards. We gave that contract to Tetra Tech to do one thing and one thing only, avoid procurement. That's why we did it. Anybody, anybody wanna argue about that?
That's not true.
We did it to avoid procurement, going out for bidding for services. We had hired, we hired Tetra Tech, plus they put it on their contract. There is a big difference when an engineer is hired and he does subcontracting with people who are reporting to him and doing work for him. Holmontis was doing nothing for him. We were, they were just a benefit. They were a, a, a means of accomplishing the end and that was us hiring a architect, i.e. Holmontis, to do the work. We can't hold the engineer responsible for that. If we do, he'll never do that again and no engineer in his right mind would do that. Why, why would I wanna go out and take a risk when I have no skin in the game?
Well, they're being compensated for their services, Tetra Tech is.
And I think they're overhaired an admin cost for it too. They're a sub consultant to, Holmontis is a sub consultant to Tetra Tech as district engineer. And so Tetra Tech agreed to take on that task. And the idea, all, all, the alternative would have been to go through the.
Who are we negotiating with? Tetra Tech or Holmontis? As I understood, the contract was negotiated with Holmontis.
I see Tetra Tech.
Tetra Tech. Holmontis didn't, Holmontis didn't prepare the proposal or his scope or proposal?
They provided to Tetra Tech.
We're playing games with words here, people. You don't do this in the engineering business. It'd be like a doctor going to another doctor and authorizing. This is ridiculous what we're doing. The bottom line is we're getting around the real issue. The real issue is, is that this project was not supposed to go beyond the thirty percent point till we resurveyed our community. And we obviously.
I don't know about that. I, I don't.
I thought that the phase one of what the prep recommended, I think, I thought we agree on that. I disagree on the, the word fool and the whole thing. Absolutely outside with you, Ed, and we did not talk about that.
That's the direction I have is phase one.
We have all been in unison agreement of the administrative building and the phase one.
Work.
And phase one. We've all been a hundred percent agree.
To the thirty percent point.
And then we spent.
Not a hundred percent design. We wanted to see what the plan was before we authorized it going to full design. Because one of the conditions were, we had questions of what the construction costs and the operation costs were. And we were gonna, and I remember I asked, why did we send, why did that park committee send out that silly survey? Why do you ask somebody, would you like to have this? Would you like to have that? Oh, we forgot to tell you what it costs.
Well, they're not faithful to doing that. I mean, they're trying to, they're trying to, to gain feedback. We can't.
You don't do it that way, Doug.
Yeah.
You don't.
Well, we will manage it through staff next time.
You'll get anybody that will tell you, you'll get anybody will tell you, yeah, I like this and I like this and I like that. Go back and tell them what it's gonna cost them. Now they change their mind. And that's the difference of what we did three years ago. We told people what it was gonna cost and we got a survey back. It's eighty-seven percent of the people told us, don't do anything.
But that's what we're doing now. So let's continue. And then we, when the price comes, then, then either we cut it or we don't. I thought that's what we talked about.
Well, hold on. We have, from what we're saying, is if we're doing design, we're way beyond thirty percent. Where's the cost estimate?
Well, I haven't seen anything past sixty.
I haven't seen anything.
So that's my frustration with Tetra Tech because I went to Chelsea. I said, Chelsea, show me. And she's like, I don't have it. So I, I, we don't have that, which also equals that we don't have a cost, which equals that we can adjust.
So this is the Tetra Tech issue.
To me, it's a Tetra Tech issue.
May I chime in please? So when we had the kickoff meeting with Tetra Tech and Holmontis for the phase one park improvements, I did ask Tetra Tech and we did, it was very clear from all parties involved that we wanted to add as a bid alternative of the site work for the phase one park improvements, site work. So that way you all could make an educated decision and have true numbers as to how much the site work was gonna cost.
And a benefit of doing the site work along, along with the administrative building, cause it would make engineering sense to do all, it could potentially make, make sense to do it once.
Doing the site work, Doug, within the confines of the admin building, I have absolutely no problem with. I see absolutely no reason to spend one nickel doing any kind of work outside the confines of the admin building until we've agreed.
Till we know the price and everything. I think we're all in agreement there.
I agree with that as well.
So, so in order to get, the, the site work was truly the only unknown from, from a staff perspective. And the engineers can give it their estimate, but until we get hard numbers to know what, what the cost is gonna be, I can't present that to you. So we are working on a price proposal from more sports for all of the court sports, hoping to have that in the next week. The playground you approved today, we know how much that costs. The only last component is the site work. And if it's an alternative, you do not have to, it's not included as part of the base bid, so you'll have pricing from.
Chelsea, I didn't know anything about it. This is news to me.
We talked about it in the last board meeting.
That we were doing an alternative bid of doing.
We, we did, we did talk about the last board meeting, that there was an opportunity to do, to include as an alternative, the site work into the.
I'm not saying the site work. I totally agree with the site work. I'm talking about the stuff that has to do with the park. The park-related expenses do not need to be bid at this time. We'll bid that out with the park people.
But then, but then we're not gonna know the cost to tell the residents of the survey how much it's gonna cost.
We do, just like we did the building. We got an estimate from the engineer.
Which was really odd.
The engineer tells me they provided us, you, with a copy of the cost of this estimated project. I've not seen it. Have you seen it?
Of what estimated project?
The, the phase one project.
They haven't, cause that's what I was asking Chelsea and that was my frustration. I'm like, Chelsea, what does it cost? And she says, I don't have it.
Shoot, they tell me they've given it to us.
Okay, well, that's news to me as well.
You don't have a copy of the phase one cost estimate.
Okay, so, uh, who is it? Danny or who's online?
We.
Who's online?
I'm on the line.
Steven, have you provided staff with the cost?
Are we talking about the phase one park plan?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm asking Eric right now. I'm not privy to that. I know it's been fast and furious.
So we, again.
Okay, let me know the yes or no.
So, so that you're aware, cause you weren't in the conversation. Rick Rylandsky said he furnished that information and I said, okay, Rick, we asked staff to get with you and with Stephen Bloom to give us operating costs on the building and operating costs for Stephen and for, or for, yeah, Stephen Bloom and operating cost for this park. We've asked to, to have your, uh, uh, Holmontis, because they have experience in this, to do it. Holmontis said that staff said, you don't need to do that. We'll do it ourselves. Is that not correct?
That is correct, absolutely.
Well, okay, then if we have, if we have Rick saying he furnished costs, I gathered from Rick that the cost came directly to staff. If he gave it to Stephen, Stephen or you or Eric, are you aware of a estimated cost of this phase one project? I mean, this is, this stuff is so simple, it's unbelievable. We either have it or we don't.
Yeah, exactly.
We do not have the cost estimate.
So we don't.
And.
Which is what Chelsea told me and.
Okay, so we don't have one.
We don't have one. It was never provided. So I guess whatever he told you is not true.
So, so then.
Just.
Right, so then I got lied to.
So.
I'm telling you, we're out on limb people.
Okay.
Steven, Steven. Holmontis just finished those plans like yesterday. So, I mean, that's kinda how fast this has been moving.
Steven, are you in the loop? Are you in the loop of dealing with, uh, Holmontis on the park project?
Eric Fai is the project manager.
Okay, then so then would you categorically say that your firm has not received it or is it categorically you say that you haven't seen it? Could Eric have received it from?
He just asked Eric. That's why he took a long.
Eric does not have a cost estimate.
Does not.
Okay, and staff has not received anything from Holmontis?
We're, we're, no, I do not. And that's.
I got lied to.
Okay.
So.
You want a water?
That's, that's a real problem. That's, I just find it very amazing that I got lied to on half and I got told the truth on the other half.
Okay, so I wanna do this. I wanna, I wanna set up a meeting, me, you, Holmontis and Tetra Tech.
I totally, that's a great idea.
I'm gonna, I want that. And then we'll address multiple issues, communication, transparency, and back to the board and back to staff.
Can, can I have clear direction? Cause it seems like I must have misinterpreted in the past, but to continue with the alternative pricing for the site work. So you have some true numbers.
Site work?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
On, on site work.
Site work.
Site work that has to do with the admin building, not site work that has to do with the park.
No, side parks.
No, I totally disagree.
Phase one.
I'm not approving that park.
Only. Okay.
I've not agreed to approve that park yet.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve phase one of site, phase one of the site work only for the parks.
To be included. As a bid, as a bid alternative.
Yes, not included as a, as an alternative. So we know the numbers. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And I see a set of the plans that you're taking bids on because I think you're bordering on very illegal activities, people.
And by.
You are proceeding on this bidding on work that is public work that ain't got no engineer stamp on it. And I think you are in way deep water.
But I don't think we're doing bidding. That, that's, that.
What you're bidding, you are taking bids, Flavia, on a project that has not got an engineer seal on it. If I'm wrong, show me.
Holmontis is the one providing and signing and sealing and stamping.
They.
The plans for the phase one park improvements.
They told me that the plans that they are out for bid on are based on the preliminary, not final plans.
What do we even talk? What, what line item is, what did you know?
Doug.
Is this, we got district engineer?
Engineer.
This, okay, I just wanna figure out where we're at.
The presumption on this is that we have approved the phase one project. And I'm telling you, I am nowhere near the phase one park project, nowhere.
I, I, I think maybe the, the concern is there are no construction plans that a vendor can bid on. That there are no construction plans that a vendor can provide an alternative bid on for the.
No certified plans.
Or if it's only a thirty.
No, any at all, cause I haven't seen it.
Well, I mean, when you go out and you bid public works and you are doing it based, I think, like going out on the street corner and getting a plumber to do the work, he's not an engineer. You can't do that kinda stuff.
So.
And if we've got those plans, then that's fine. Alls I'm saying is, as a, as a board member here, I sure as hell like to see a copy of them.
So she just, I just asked her to ask Holmontis if he can join the call.
I like the idea. You, you and Flavia and Tetra Tech.
Tetra Tech and Holmontis.
Wait a minute.
I think that's a great idea.
Is that something we need to do on this call or do we need to actually have an agenda item to cover this?
No, I think we have an independent, um, meeting with those folks.
If you guys are okay, I'll meet with Tetra Tech, Chelsea and Holmontis.
I thought you were trying to say have Holmontis join this call.
No, I think.
Okay, all right, fine. I was gonna say, we're going down.
And then report back at the next board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Well, next board meeting, I don't watch you guys, bids are gonna be due before the next board meeting.
They're gonna be, the bids will be at the May second board meeting.
But I, the bids, the bids are received on what, the April fifteenth?
We, we moved it up to the eighteenth.
So that's the day of the meeting, the next meeting? What's today?
Yeah, it's actually the bid opening.
So the bids will be in at the time we do the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Little late.
Well, right before, right before, right?
Thirty minutes before.
Yeah.
Is when the bid opening is.
Okay.
But let's, first of all, find out. Let's find out. Are we taking bids on work that has an engineer set of plans? If we're taking bids on work that are preliminary nature, that are not based upon a professional engineer's certification or architect.
Are we not working?
We are way out.
Are we, are we working with our engineer for this process?
Yes.
And they're working with.
Then everything that we do falls under our district engineer's purview.
With their subs, yes.
Yeah, so.
But I guess the question might be, how can vendors bid on a project when there aren't any, no specificity?
We've got, we've got our district engineer on the call right now. Let him answer that.
Yeah, I was just saying, because if it's only thirty.
Steven. Why we have district engineers? It's not the, I mean.
Steven, question for you. The, the bid, the alternative bid that is out, typically when you set out an alternative bid, you attach to it the plans and specifications for the work. You got a copy of the plans and specifications for the work?
I have seen a set of plans. I've got Eric on the, he, he joined, so he can answer this question better than myself.
Okay, whoever's there, just a simple question. Do you have a set of plans and specs certified of the drainage and all that work that is being done for the alternative bid?
We have a set of preliminary plans that are not signed.
That's not one I said. I said, do you have a set of the plans and specs? I don't wanna hear about preliminary. Do you have a certified set of plans and specs?
We do not have a certified set, no.
And you're taking bids?
Correct.
How far do you guys wanna go out on a liability line? I'll tell you.
We're, we're just doing what we.
You're gonna get your butt sued so far, it's not funny.
Why would we say that, you know, for me, Ned?
This is not the work, way you do work. I'm telling you.
But that's on them.
You do your stuff. I'll do my engineering.
We were directed by staff to present.
Hold on. Go ahead, Eric.
We were directed. We were directed by Chelsea to get this out included in this bid. So we are following staff instructions.
Eric, you're the engineer. It's your responsibility to provide us guidance. If something doesn't seem directionally correct. Or within spec, it's your job and responsibility to counsel the district. If, if you, if you believe that what Ed is saying. Is accurate. We could tell you to do things all day long, but you are engineer. We employ you to be an expert in engineering. If you're not providing that service to this board today, then we have a problem.
With all due respect, we haven't been afforded the opportunity to say no to the requests that have been made by staff. So it's a, it's a non-starter. No, we had no option in the matter. It's, there's a deadline and we had to meet it. Or there might be repercussions, I suppose, but it was made very clear that there was no ifs, ands or buts. This had to go out.
And that was very clear at the kickoff meeting of when that, when that task authorization was signed.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we need to have any further discussion on this until, until there's an internal conversation.
Yes, so, so schedule that.
I think, I, I, I think that's the way to go. Let Flavia meet with, uh, uh, whoever the representative for Tetra Tech and Holmontis. And get an answer on this. My deal is I have no problem whatsoever. With anything that has to do with the engineering of that building and/or the modification of that building to accommodate a park that may or may not be built. That's good engineering. That better have plans. That better have plans. If that's done on somebody's back of an envelope. That's, that's where, that's where engineers get sued.
Okay.
You don't do that stuff. But if it includes work for the park, I mean, anything.
We'll get your recap.
Yeah.
I'd love to talk to you one on one.
And then I would, I want my, all of us and Chelsea, I'm so upset about this. It's not funny. I feel like I was undermined. I was told, and I've told people in this community. Before that park project goes one step beyond thirty percent, there will be a survey of you knowing what it's going to cost you. Right now, can anybody tell me, have any idea? Because I've got what the engineer told me. So we're somewhere between a quarter and a half million dollars for this phase one park. I have not agreed to any number like that.
But at the same time, Ed, just, you know, I understand where you're coming from. We absolutely want to get in, uh, input from the residents. But we're elected on this board to make. We're elected on this board to make decisions. We don't always agree a hundred percent with the rest.
Based upon facts. And we've always done in this community, we've always done in this community. We're going to ramrod a park down. The people's throat without, I'm not saying the people don't get to vote. This is not a voting issue. Asking for a survey, when you have the results of three years ago, eighty-seven percent told you to do nothing.
But ninety percent of those participants were, were retired.
I don't care what it is. They're owners.
It's not a full representation.
Okay, so, so let's go back. We'll set up the meeting. I actually know what, I think I would like to include Tony on it as well.
I'm sorry.
Tony?
Yeah, I'd like to be in on that too, because I have, I have some concern.
Okay, so we'll do Tetra Tech, Holmontis, Chelsea and Tony and myself, okay? This sooner or better. All right, so let's move. Any, anything else now regarding parks for district engineer? Any other questions?
I think that's enough.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony. And nothing about park?
No, you have administrative items.
Oh, did I miss that? Oh, okay. So.
Be right back.
Budget initiatives.
Oh, my God.
Where's she going?
So budget initiative, so I get, so we will go back.
So again, this was just to discuss any budget initiatives that you may have for us to start to solicit, um, either quotes or get some pricing on. Uh, Laura provided the timeline for budget. It's a very condensed budget, um, and we're starting to work away at it.
I think if we use the format that we did a year ago, that, and the timeline that we did a year ago is perfect.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
Is there a priority you'd like to see first and have discussing, discussions like the capital?
Capital should, I think, should come first.
Staff can focus on getting the capital numbers and updating those if we need to, and then getting that to you as soon as possible.
Well, and then, uh, during the workshop, we also gave you some direction as far as personnel and.
Yep, we can get those.
Personnel and benefits.
Okay.
Will we have enough information back on that benefits? Because that could be a dollar issue, a major dollar issue. That we talked about earlier on health and other benefits. I mean, that's a big ticket item.
You should, that shouldn't take too long to calculate.
Well, we just need to know.
The May second meeting. We'll get it back to your May second meeting. Well, that's a, we can have a workshop and that's what we can follow back up with.
Yep.
Is that good?
Yeah.
What, at, but along that line is, I just want to make sure that on this, because if you're saying that we've had problems with losing potential employees. Because of not salary, but because of benefits. Were the other things that were inclusive in that, that we need to have at the same time? In other words, let's, let's.
Anything else?
Problem at one time. And if we need to increase vacation, if we need to increase healthcare.
I thought we, we talked about something that allow an employee to use the, the, the pool member. The, we talked about, yes, allowing as a benefit, like, uh, employees that do not live in the district. To utilize, you know, the pool if they wanted to or.
So that, it's called total reward. So what we should be looking at is total rewards, uh, as it relates to, to our employees. That includes benefits. Matching programs, perks.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we'll look at that and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, great.
And of course, Doug, you'll be there in case they have some.
Yeah.
Uh, things that they'd like to ask you about. Thanks.
But the big thing is this timeline is tighter now.
It's tight.
It's tight. It's really tight.
We can do this, guys. Come on.
Staff's going to be working diligently over the next couple of weeks to get some budget numbers together.
This is doable.
Okay, so community branding proposal.
Yes, um, so again, going back to the monuments and looking at. Big picture, looking at the admin building, look at fonts, logos, color schemes, carpeting, all of the details. We solicited a couple quotes. Um, this was the only vendor who chose to bid on it. Um, Pearl, I personally have worked with Pearl in the past for the branding of some, uh, beach access signs at the beach. Um, this would be a, they provide a style guide, um, for the district and helping, um, with our branding identity.
Do, what, do they do marketing concepts as well?
I believe so, yes. I think that's the bread and butter, actually.
I mean, it makes sense.
So we're looking for your direction if you'd like for us to proceed with this.
And I think part of this is getting, if we're going to go outside, they're going to do all the professional. Due diligence, come back with, you know, everything that we should be using from a district perspective, but also to help us. Because we've been doing a lot. We've got new roundabouts, we've got, you know, ponds, we've got a new building, maybe, maybe parks in the future, existing parks. Um, I think the idea is to come up with also with, uh, some type of initiative around our Gateway community. Targeted primarily to the Gateway residents themselves, but also to those outside for us to, you know, continue to posi- position Gateway. As a premier community of choice. So I think, um, I think having some, uh, outside. Uh, I think there's a lot of value there.
And this company, I, I believe they're the ones who did the Florida Association of Special Districts. I think in their brandy attached, um, some of the samples that they've done. Um, they're in downtown Fort Myers, so they're local. Yeah.
We've never done anything like this before. We've never actually invested in marketing and brand, uh, that I'm aware of for, for.
And it's time.
Yeah, the other thing is, to Carol's point earlier, uh, Pelican is a unique situation, but we are part of Gate. And we internally in Pelican have not done a very good job of communicating the services that GS CDD provides to our people. So this gives us an opportunity, and I guess I would like to make that a subset focus of this. Is how do we incorporate the totality of the GS?
Yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah.
And also, Carl, I guess the other part of what you brought up earlier is when we get to the service agreement with the P, uh, the CDD. We may be able to get rid of some of these, with, uh, PPC, we may get rid of some of the issues of failure to communicate. That's gotta be a part of that new agreement. So, yeah, I am totally in favor of this.
Okay, so you want a motion?
I, I hit approve.
Right? Not to exceed seventeen five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we have a motion not to exceed seventeen five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second on favor?
All right.
All right.
And you know, if the Griffin has to go, the Griffin has to go.
You have no idea how many times.
Griffin has to go, the Griffin has to go.
I mean, I'm not opposed to a brand refresh.
Right. We'll be working on it.
Okay, palm tree trimming consideration.
Yep, so, um, you asked us to make sure that the numbers matched across all boards. And so staff went back and reevaluated and, um, the number slightly changed, but, um, I believe Manscape was still. Uh, the low, or no, big T, no, Manscape is still the low bidder with proper MOT.
You, you're talking about maintenance traffic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, which is required as part of this.
Yeah.
Okay, is Manscape going to do this themselves or are they going to subcontract to somebody else?
I'd have to go back and look. Um, can you pull up?
This is palms?
Yeah.
Typically what they do is they don't go over fifteen feet.
They subcontracted that.
They subcontract over fifteen feet.
And, okay, because Amerescape in Pelican, um, is doing their palms, but they were subcontracting it to somebody else.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I'd have to follow up with Scott and find out if it's a sub.
I, I was a little confused by Manscape's bid of twenty-three, 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 when we know that. If they follow their true deal, that they bid it out when it's over fifteen feet, I would have thought those Royals would have come in at significantly higher price, but.
They just divided it. They just divided them.
They just divided it, yeah. I don't have any.
There was no point of, okay.
So I think Flavia, you mentioned at the last meeting, you'd like to pull it from a different line item instead of the one that was proposed originally.
Did you want a motion to approve Manscape for vendors?
So the money that we had set aside for this was utilized to trim the oak trees, the hardwood trimmed. So there is no money on that line item for palm trees. So we have to pull it from somewhere else. What did?
You want, I think, the plant replacement?
You want a contingency and I, I thought we should have pulled it from.
Plant replacement.
Which I think you had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
There's plenty of money in both.
Yeah, so I prefer to leave contingent as it is and just at least in the same line item, which will help us for guidance on twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out of the plant replacement.
Plant replacement, because there's money there.
So the motion is?
So the motion is to go ahead with the Manscape bid, um, and pull the money from the plant replacement.
I'll second.
On favor?
All right, thank you. We'll get that scheduled. And then, um, you've moved.
The bond.
Yep, the bond. So, uh, if I could just, uh, give a quick update and Carol, thank you for pulling it. Um, they were, Lenar and their subs were out, uh, making their repairs to the valley gutters. Wyatt did go out this morning and inspected. Uh, they do not meet the, the slope. So I'm going to ask that you table this to the April eighteenth, whatever the next board meeting is. Um, for, and then potentially give them another two weeks to make the adjustments.
Really? It wasn't that much work and they couldn't get the slope right?
Okay, no problem. So table that.
I talked to some people. Got some pictures from it, so.
Okay, so then we're good with eleven?
I'll move the table.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We'll work, push them to finalize it, get it fixed.
That coffee's really like.
So, um, just a couple items, a couple things under district manager items. One of, if you may recall, uh, we some months ago had tried to negotiate a contract with Tori Olmer to bring. Uh, swimming lessons to the community pool. Um, we've since worked through some insurance requirements, talked to legal, talked to our insurance provider. Um, she's able to meet all of our requirements now, less the automobile. Um, but there is one caveat. Instead of doing the seventy thirty split, which is in our fee schedule, the request, this, since this is a new program, is to do an eighty twenty split. Um, so ultimately I'm looking for your approval for that deviation of the fee schedule for the eighty twenty. Approval of the contract so she can start advertising and we can get swim lessons at the community pool this summer.
Yeah, what my, what my recommendation would be is we add. We add an additional layer to our fees, uh, uh, fee schedule and call that a preferred vendor. Or, you know, something along those lines. That way we can maintain our seventy thirty, but those that meet certain requirements, we consider preferred. We give them, you know. Eighty, eighty, eighty twenty.
Can we do that?
And, and how they.
Yeah, yeah, but if we do, if we change a fee schedule, we have to have a ten days for the public hearing to do that.
We have to do it regardless.
We're gonna do it this summer, yes.
But that way, and it would be, you meet insurance requirements, you have letters of recommendation, you have blah, blah, whatever, but we have, that has to be defined.
Right, what you can do for this is a one-off, is, is waive that schedule and, and adopt the eighty twenty schedule for this contract to get it going. But, but, but going forward, implement changes to the schedule.
And the other activities that we have there, they're not, so I kind of, maybe you and I can talk about it, the water yoga, because.
I've got to look into that a little bit more.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Uh, all right, just a couple additional things. Um, we are bringing golf camp up to the commons in the, in the grassy area. It's going to be a two-week camp. It's a third-party vendor, TGA. Um, the guy was here a couple, uh. What's our Christmas party? Winter fest ago, anyway, um, signed a contract. He's going to be renting space from us up at the commons and offering. Youth, um, golf camp.
When is it?
June-ish. The ad will go out. I think Randy was working with the gentleman on pushing out the advertisement through the district's website.
And, and we're not doing it here because we're going to be, we'll have it closed?
Uh, we don't want to encourage golf at the soccer complex.
It's a much better location.
I, I know.
Because I'm telling you, the, the grass and the, it's really not ideal to do it over there. I mean, I'm almost against doing it there. Because there's fire ants, there, the grass is terrible.
He seemed willing to do it this go-around and so that's something.
Yeah, but it's going to just. Yeah, it's just going to be a bad experience for the kids. Like, I wouldn't sign my kid to go hit balls in the sandlot over there. To me, it's just not a good experience. Uh, I mean, that's me.
I, I, I didn't want to bring it over here with all of the.
Yeah, but they're not hitting real balls. They're hitting. Um, they're getting sponge balls.
If you'd like to have him.
If it's available and they can do it over here, just have him do it over here.
Okay, I know it's in the month of June, so that's typically when we shut down the soccer complex, but if we can.
But I don't think we're going to use it all.
Yeah, I mean, all their, they're not even going to be, they're not even going to be on the field. They're going to be on a mat.
So.
And then, maybe they have to go pick up balls from the, if it's aerated or whatever, but I think it's a better experience over here.
We'll ask, we'll ask him to move to the Sherman Soccer Complex. All right, um, Carrie has been working diligently and, um. Per that questionnaire that the PRAC committee put out, um, and the overwhelming response to bring a farmer's market to Gateway. Um, the organizers for the Lakes Park Farmer's Market, and I think they do a couple others. Um, we're working with them on contracts to bring it here in October at the Sherman Soccer Complex to have a farmer's market. For, for the, um.
When, when, when would it start?
It would, it would start in October. It'd be a year-round farmer's market and it would be in the mornings on, I believe, tentatively, right now it's penciled in for. Like Friday mornings from nine to one or something.
Oh, once a week.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
So, um, we're working, we're working through that. Um, to Carol's point earlier about, you know, communication, um, you'll notice if you go on our district website, we have something new. Um, subscribe to community notifications. Um, it's under, I want to subscribe.
In three places.
Three places, but that's the easiest. Um, and you can say what community that you want to get notifications for. So again, going back to, you know, we're sending things to CAMs or to presidents. And then they're not being passed forward. Residents, business owners, people can sign up to sus- to subscribe for notifications.
Is Randy pushing that through our social sites as well?
There, actually, the first time you logged into the website, and I was testing it during a meeting with him. There's a pop-up box that comes up and it says, not available.
Yeah, yeah. I almost didn't know what it was at first, because it literally takes you out of the website and to a pop-up. It's kind of weird, but, uh, but. So Randy's through our social spaces, he's saying for alerts, click here and hyperlink back.
There's also a link underneath on the, in the footer of every single page on the website that has, next to like the Facebook, like follow us thing, there's a place you can sign in there.
And um again, Randy's been working diligently at um, you know, getting people to know what Gateway is, and we will have a small blurb in the Gateway Neighbors Magazine in May. Um so keep on the lookout for that. I know he's been working over in Pelican with Stroll Magazine and seeing what, what if anything we can do there, but uh keep an eye out in the Gateway Neighbors Magazine. That's all I've got.
I have one question, can, is appropriate to give an update on today's meeting on the financial issue?
Yeah, I can do that. That's good. Thank you for reminding me.
Can can Randy, can Randy reach out to the different communities that do a monthly publication like Stony Brook has the scoop? I think it, Silver Lakes. Silver Lakes has something and just, he should be providing at least some.
Same.
Alert, yeah, just, you know, this is what's happening, you know, what's going on in Gateway, maybe there's something specific. But I mean, from a PR perspective, he should be a central point of contact. And if there's space, great, if there's not, that's fine, but he should at least have, ha- should should know who the point of contact is and what publications go out in in the different communities. He does a really good job with the, you know, with the social sites.
I think for Ed's point earlier, and I know you and I talked about that, up, you know, updating the, and I don't think George is working updating on the president's. And I I know I mentioned this over and over, and I don't think this has happened, inviting Randy to go to those board meetings and putting a face, because even if there's five residents in attendance, and when you're looking at the board and say, look, there's a president's council meeting. I don't know if you're getting, I don't know if your cam is not getting, and literally asking for direction, like, do I have a commitment from from you guys that you give your cam authorization to just email out? I think.
To the private HOA meetings?
Yeah, I mean, we have some there held here.
He would be a PR representative.
Might be the only time you get the cam and the president together.
Exactly, so I think that's really important. Go there and and then get, you know, get the board to, because sometimes it's the president, but the president's not really involved in that part. Um I think there's a huge opportunity for, you know, it doesn't have to be Randy, it could be you, but I think it's Randy's position, so he should go.
If we're doing that, include the Pelican.
Yeah, like have have Randy go over there and 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 yeah, put a face to it.
All the things that we have on our plate that are coming up. The the people need to hear about it now.
Before, exactly.
Not afterwards.
And those are usually only yearly meetings. It shouldn't be a real burden, although there's a number of.
That's why if we can get that meeting uh in a couple of weeks and get as many of them to attend, because if we can find out who doesn't attend, it won't bother me to send him a letter.
Right.
Okay.
Because this is ridiculous. Don't, don't come in here and complain, Johnnycom lately. When we did everything we could to tell you what's going on and you just ignored it. That's a, that's not fair of the residents.
Anything else for Chelsea?
I just wanted to touch on what Bob brought up. So we did have a um the auditing issue that we've had with the community, Pelican Preserve Community Association, we had um Laura, myself, Tony, Stephen Bloom drove over, our auditor drove over. Um and the community association brought their legal counsel, their um auditor, their accountant, uh their president and their past treasurer. Um it was a very good meeting yesterday.
Who wrote the check?
Laura's gonna crunch the the la- last two years worth of um detailed transactions, provide that to our accountant. Um have him vet it, review it, not that we don't trust Laura's numbers, because she's very good at numbers. Um then we're gonna pass that over to them for their review and to, if if there is a thirty thousand or sixty thousand, eighty thousand delta that they need to provide the supporting documentation for that, that we don't have. Um if they're unwilling to or unable to, then we have a follow-up meeting scheduled about six weeks from now, mid-May. Um we're working through the M press amount, which I think we've resolved, which is that a hundred and three thousand dollars that the district fronted them um for their operating account, so uh we have a check for that. Tony and Laura are gonna work through. We have a minor issue, but we're gonna get that resolved and trued up. Um but we are gonna reconvene in about six weeks and um hopefully bring this to to an end and then uh bring it to you for your final direction.
So the ball's in their court.
It's in our court right now for Laura um to finish the numbers and then we're gonna do that.
Well, we made progress.
And and it's in their court to give us the records and documents we've been asking for.
That's what we've been wanting.
Because they, I gave them the, their attorney, the the state retention schedule for public records. And so that will tell them everything they need to. We told them everything that's in the contract you need to give us.
Yeah, and one last thing, um again, with all of the projects that we have going on, Tetra Tech did tell me that they were not able to provide uh inspectors, at least for the admin building. Um they're short on inspectors, they have a lot of projects going on, so we're drafting uh an RFP to solicit for construction engineering and inspections uh that we anticipate to go out soon.
Do what?
A good job for you.
So.
What?
Free, be free.
There's always a cost. What are you talking about?
Yeah, there's always a cost.
Yes. It's gonna be actually very expensive.
There ain't no free lunch.
Yeah.
So so we're so we're, we have a contract with Tetra Tech to perform the uh engineering design and construction supervision and inspection services on this building, and now they aren't doing it.
I've asked about an inspector for the admin building and I've been told that they're short on inspectors, so.
We'll add that to the agenda.
Yeah.
My talk?
Yeah, that was, that wasn't my question.
You're not gonna like the answer, so we're added to the agenda now, I'll try to get a better answer.
The answer was, they didn't have a requirement to furnish the inspectors.
They had a limited.
From the contract.
They had limited CEI.
So we're going to have, we're gonna be hiring an inspection firm that's a separate engineering firm that's going to be doing the inspection of another engineering firm's work.
Yeah, that's nothing new. Federal, all federal projects require that.
Read anything, any engineering manual, that's a no-no. You don't do that.
I know, yeah, my frustration with Tetra Tech, why are they not speaking up? And I mean, I just.
We're just making mistakes, people that are one-on-one in engineering, you don't do these things. And I don't know where this, where this attitude started, but it's got to come to a halt. You can't do work this way. You have, I can tell you from experience, you have an inspector that comes out and starts interpreting another engineering's work product. And I'll tell you right now, the Arizona Mission Insurance of the engineer that designed it, where you will, you will have served it on a platter to him. You don't do that. You just don't do that. You retain the engineer to do the inspection. As I understand it, the reason Tetra Tech didn't have any people is because they were not anticipating doing the work, because it wasn't in their contract. Uh when we're, when we're telling a story, let's tell the.
We've been saying, I I don't know, because we have been talking to Tetra Tech about.
It was taken out of their contract.
No, but.
No, it limited, that's.
It was limited.
So but.
You don't, you don't.
That was a concern to them, why didn't they bring that up to us? And then like, and you know, I'm
Well, I mean.
I'm glad that you have the knowledge, but Bob didn't have that knowledge, I didn't have that knowledge, Doug and Carol didn't have that knowledge. So I I, I mean, I'm looking forward to the meeting because I want to empower them, encourage them to be able to speak up. I mean.
Well, this isn't the only time that we've had to use, we had to use AECom when I first started, because I didn't have inspectors.
For the roundabout too, I think.
If 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 they have a contract and they have an inspection clause in that contract, now we got a whole different issue. They didn't perform.
Have you, have you looked, have you looked at the contract, see if it's in there?
Uh.
Have you looked at the contract, see if it's in there?
Just going by what they told me, they told me that Chelsea took inspection out of the contract.
I'll send you the task authorization.
Was that true?
I did not take it out. It's, it's limited in there.
I didn't say that, Chelsea. I said, did we take inspection? What's, what's limited inspection?
Their next amount of hours?
Let's, let's have.
So that, that's what I was thinking, remember how we did talk about that?
Let's have a little discussion about engineering. Engineers perform design, bidding and construction supervision, and if retained, they do, the owner wants it, you do resident inspection or onsite inspection. All engineers will do routine onsite construction supervision, which some people call inspection. But it's so routine or not permanent to where you have an inspector after watching everything. He only sees and he's only supervising and he's only attesting to what he saw when he was there. That's not a good way to do a building or do any type of project. You want full-time inspection.
I thought we.
That is what I was understanding, that we pulled out of the contract. Full-time inspection.
No, I thought we talked about like back, I don't know if it's for this, but something about twenty hours a month, does the.
Well, listen, why don't we take this off?
Yeah, so I I remember that. Yeah.
Reason.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Well, the 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 issue is, is that if you're going to hire, my only thing is, is that if you're going to hire an inspector, now that this one's Johnnycom lately, because they don't have the staff. But if we're gonna hire an inspector, we've, we gotta find out just what the the uh responsibilities and the the uh duties that he's seeing. The one thing that we don't want was, we don't want him giving that contractor any advice or interpretations of plans and specs. Because we're, we're way out in the limb. We can't do that. So as long as they know that and understand that, you roll the dice. But I just, most engineering firms do not want to do other engineers.
Well, let's address, let's address that at the meeting.
And I think what's important is, we we get the task cause authorization, get the contract with Tetra Tech and see exactly what is the scope. And I think that's the critical.
And modify it.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to the board and and clarify.
We can always modify.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chelsea? No?
No.
Okay, so Tony.
Uh yes, just on the Stony Brook Monument sign, that's the memo that's in there. Um we've uh Margaret referenced about the the Stony Brook Ford, oh, there you are, Margaret's stuff. That's who is willing to uh enter to grant an easement for that sign, will also be a bill of sale. If you go to the agenda memo, uh if you go to page two, excuse me, page four of that memo. Uh attack, if you blow up the graphics, see that that boxed out in blue? That's sort of an indication of the wall monument sign up in that little that that little hook, like a push hook.
That little curlicue?
Yes, and then if you go to page twenty-two, if you could, Chelsea or Laura, whoever's got the PowerPoint or the screen, you'll see the uh some of the pictometry photos from LIPA. Um that indicate the extent of that wall and monument sign, how it extends. The first one is on page twenty-two. You don't, in the memo?
Don't you have a page count on that?
Yeah, I'm on page one hundred. It goes back to this page.
One nineteen.
That's the one, oh.
Okay, so I'm looking at page twenty, I'm looking at the P D.
One nineteen and one eighteen.
There we go, the one before that.
Yeah.
No, there, if you look at the extent of the wall, monument, that's from January. Yeah, that's from January fourteenth of twenty-eleven. Then if you go down to the next slide or next, that's two thousand twelve, so you have an idea of the extent of it. And there's, you can tell also the fence was put in between eleven and twelve, because in the one, the prior page, the defense is not there. So I think what Margaret was indicating that they would keep the fence and we, and they proposed the district get the wall.
We take the masonry structure.
Yeah.
They take the fence.
They keep, yes, and then again, I I would look to the, and you.
Oh, no, because here it's masonry as well.
I think.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Sorry.
If you go to the prior page, if you could, go quick, I'm sorry.
Just need to clarify.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'm closing, they got the lower wall, uh you know, from there, and then there's a the higher, I'll call it taller wall, then the smaller wall goes all the way back to. So we just get a surveyor to do that and I would use as a guide the dimensions off of the wall and those two walls that were used for the Pelican Reserve entry features.
Okay.
Because it's a larger, that we have access and maintenance and everything else. So I'll work with Chelsea on that, uh to get that, bring that back to the board.
Can I just touch on that? Give a little history of how we got to where we are.
Thing.
I, it was brought up that there were issues with irrigation lighting, who was paying for what, and so when we started to open Pandora's Box, this is what came of it. We realized we didn't even own the monument.
Who, who pays for the power?
It depends on what you ask, what it's for. For the control, for the irrigation, we do. For the lighting.
The lighting for the monument.
Still trying to figure that out.
But we don't know what meter is coming off of.
I've gotta, I've gotta still do that due diligence.
Lots of luck.
Can you show the two thousand sixteen picture?
So maybe the the position is that we're open for an easement, but let's look into it, what the.
The overall.
The overall, because we know the wall, it's the only thing we know. But there are more components of it, and I think that's the conversation that you and I and Margaret had at the office.
Yeah.
So we're, I mean, I think the board is open to it, but we just need to know what is gonna be included out.
So again, the masonry wall, we would take over.
But there's actually two masonry walls, it looks like.
Okay, the the the, well, masonry walls.
Oh, yeah.
And they will do the columns with the fencing.
And when you come up with the, Tony, you do the hachmark? You do the hashing.
Yes, and it's less.
But those would be actual sketch and legal description. I think it's sketching.
They're there.
To be more defined because of the.
Because if you look at the twenty sixteen picture, it's, you know, gives you the broader picture of the fence component.
Yes, yeah.
So there will be a cost incurred for the sketch and legal description, as well as Tony's time to draft any sign, any sign easements.
And who mainscape or who mainscape?
We do.
Who mainscapes this?
We do.
We do.
We, our, our staff.
Our mainscape.
And Bill said they're on the same meter? Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Tony, are you talking about just the, the wall, just the curlicue there?
Well, let's go back to, let's go back to two thousand eleven.
Talking about the rectangle?
Well, let's go back to two thousand eleven, no, just the wall. If you go back to page.
Just that.
Nineteen, that one and the next page.
Twelve is even clearer.
That, yeah, the next page. Two thousand twelve, the next page. That one, yeah.
Yes.
Can't even see.
Okay.
And not the fence, you can see there's a fence at the bottom.
Yes.
Not the fence.
Okay. But.
I think that's a fair.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's backseat one.
You take the masonry, they take the wall.
Yep. Um AGO status, the the Attorney General's Office has it and it's in their section that reviews those, so we found, we made an inquiry last week on the uh Pelican Reserve landscape property reason, we're having a call, we have one last piece, we're having a call tomorrow on a meeting, but actually we passed a relative to wrap up the portion along tree line by the turn lane going into the community to have that easement transferred over.
I think this should conclude it.
With.
However.
Reserve.
However, there's a caveat, because the community association has engaged representation to look at all that they have, and things may pop up.
Yeah.
Because we had a very narrow focus in what we looked at, just what we had historically been maintaining. And there may be surprise and surprises in the future, hopefully not.
Yeah, and along that line too, we uh Charles Mann's Office provided an updated package in Excel spreadsheet of the straggler parcels, and so I got that.
More?
Pardon, more? No, no, it's, it's the list that we looked at a long time ago, we had the various parcels and then Pelican Reserve one nineteen and twenty.
Yes.
So I've received that about a week and a half ago, I've not yet looked at that, but hope they can come back and report and wrapped it up by the first meeting in May. It's on our rap, all goes up. That would be wonderful. Uh the defunct uh property owners association, we're having a meeting, I guess, Monday, right, with uh Fairway Lakes Office Park. And then also I found some additional documents that were sent over to Daniel's Preserve with regards to the, who has to maintain Commerce Lake Drive and Express Court. There's a prior maintenance agreement between them and the Worthington Association that's defunct, so.
But that maintenance agreement looks like it's just on the original capital. It didn't say ongoing maintenance.
Well.
I don't read that.
We'll, we'll have it on.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can try to figure that out, whether it's capital or whether it's ongoing maintenance.
Then the meeting with uh Fairway Lakes is next week.
I think it's Monday afternoon.
Yes.
Monday afternoon. And uh any other questions the board has?
No.
Thank you.
Future for business? Oh, the O four in the, I mean, O in.
Yeah, I, I need agreement, there's, there's no inconsistency. The language at issue says notwithstanding the above two abilities to terminate it, there's a third way to terminate it, which is the association can give notice by May first. You terminate it as of October. Uh and so that's, it just says notwithstanding the foregoing A and B ability to terminate with the district, the association has the right to terminate at effective October first of any year upon giving written notice no later than the preceding May first.
And Tony, what about mutual termination?
It can happen anytime. So I mean, and it's, it's speculative as to what's gonna happen with the AG request. And if it comes back, that it can be conveyed, then we can just work out amendment.
They just want a qualification on it, and I think that's kind of like Chelsea and I were gonna talk about mutually, mutually agreed, then there is no date.
It can terminate, yeah.
Yes.
That's correct.
That is your question.
But if there's one-sided, there are dates.
Then it, which is, yeah. Okay. All right, so future agenda management?
Yep.
Anybody want? Thinking of that, will you physically be here on the eighteenth? Because I will not. Because I will not.
Okay, so I was leaving on the tenth, this one year, but I, after today, I think it's best that I'll stay, so I'll. Yes. Yes, very, very reimbursable tickets, but yeah, so I will stay. My kids will be so happy.
Okay, then I will call in and Bob will call in and.
Okay. All right, nothing else to add to the agenda management? No. I don't have any. No? Okay. Supervisor comment, does that have a Bob?
We're looking at possibly, this is on Stroll Magazine, and we may have an opportunity. From a PR point of view, my, my question is now that you've seen Stroll, do they have something like that at Gateway?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, they are, because that's pretty glossy, it's a nice magazine. Uh, second thing, uh. Reiterating that when we finally finish the financial issues at Pelican. Then we're gonna resurface the service agreement and the experience that we've had, the service agreement negotiation. And the experience that we've had over these last three, four months. Means that that proposal needs to be refreshed. Amended, yeah. So just throwing that out there, because that goes back to Carol and letting everybody know what's going on. Uh, the last thing is, uh, working with Daniel on our power washer. And tractor and everything, uh, we're pursuing, I believe he's gonna pursue the purchase of a Conex trailer. And we hope to put that in the Pelican Reserve Storage Yard and maybe even put electric service to it. And that should be our basis of operation as we move forward. That's all I've got.
Ed?
Nothing. What? Done.
Oh, my God, I got the big one. Never done that in four years.
Yeah. I'm good as well, okay, so. What should I do? All right, so moot.
Thank you, thank you.